Those results to the county manager and here we're presenting those results to you today. Just to remind you that what ABM attempts to do is take all of the pieces that you use and spend to run your buildings and shrink down those pieces of that pie to create money to improve your facilities. What you've told us during the process, what we've learned from talking with the pages and your folks that are in the field is that infrastructure in the county is a mix of old and new and there's no way to just come out of pocket and fix all of it in one time and replace it. County does have some controls, but you have no centralized control system that gives you control of your run times and set points in the buildings you own and pay for. You've worked to maintain and upgrade your building using the traditional infrastructure improvement funding method and you've done a commendable job in that. So we've been through some hard times where, where things got pushed to the side and deferred maintenance occurred. You do desire to improve your current facilities from energy and operations savings where possible and HVAC needs should be addressed where, addressed where possible. I'm sorry, I forgot to advance the slide. Preliminary results, we only examined the county's current utility cost for 10 of your buildings. You own a lot of buildings, a lot of property. To set up a preliminary number, we examined 10 buildings and we've got those listed for you. You've done a formidable job in improving your infrastructure through a normal method. You do have some HVAC equipment needs throughout the county, particularly at older buildings. There are energy savings opportunities throughout the county. These savings generators include lighting controls, water conservation, electrical distribution, building envelope upgrades, diaphragm tires, in-water conservation, and fleet fuel economization opportunity. Humidity in our area is always a challenge. There are some new ways to deal with that. Jim, and I like to get this either way up front. I know you have a printed copy of the presentation. I would suspect Mr. Page is pretty good about that. Just let you know, we believe based on those 10 buildings that you have a $1.84 million self-funded opportunity to improve your buildings over 15 years. That allows you to do those improvements today and the guaranteed energy and operational savings that those improvements produce pay for all the costs of that material. So it is a, and that is a very conservative number because again, we only looked at 10 of your buildings. And at this stage, it's a 5,000-foot view, so that's not what we'll end up guaranteeing, but it's what we believe we can make happen. Just to, to show you a little bit of what we found, these are various pictures of thermostats that we took in our brief tour of the 10 buildings. So as you can tell, there's no commonality. There's no single source or, or single thermostat that would allow someone from a centralized location from anywhere to manage and operate that. So you have various controls. You have a significant lighting potential throughout the district, throughout the county. These are, are some samples of some inefficient lighting that we found and we could recommend significant replacements to improve your energy footprint. We found existing HVAC potential throughout the county. These are some of the units that, that we encountered during our, during our trip around in, in just a day's business. So you do have some opportunities, some older equipment, some equipment that just, just has passed its useful life, expected useful life and is operating inefficiently. Building envelope potential, leak prevention and detection. As you see, these are doors, the first two on the top are both courthouse and they're not seal well. You know, I, I tell people all the time, if you can physically slide a dollar bill through a crack, then you're sliding lots of dollar bills through that crack as you operate that building and there's a better way to do it. Opportunities for closing out some, some air that's not being used, vents that are currently out of service as well. Other existing potential, some transformer replacement potentials. You have some potential, particularly the jail is advanced equipment and some changes that can be made there to, to improve the laundry condition as well as the kitchen operations, hot water, hot water production and storage. There's, there's more efficient ways to do that than what we've found as well as computer work. With a list of, of just things to evaluate would be to retrofit all your buildings with new LED lighting to improve efficiencies. Replace HVAC equipment that's beyond its useful life. The cause of, one of the two things, either it's condition or it's saves. Install a system to control humidity in buildings. You know, we used to have the phrase lower temperature. There's some better ways to do that now. Analyze the need to install or replace power transformers with new high efficiency transformers. You know, when you walk by one and it's buzzing or it's hot, that's, that's inefficient. That's using energy that you shouldn't use. Building envelope investigation, make sure your buildings are sealed, your thermal engines, know where you're losing conditioned air and bringing in new conditioned air. A central water management system for plumbing fixtures. Analyze the missing hot water storage, jail in particular, replace the pipe towel dispensers in, in large restroom areas where crowds gather particularly. Put diaphragm tires, upgrade your controls to an energy management system, retro commission your current HVAC controls and systems and include prevented maintenance approach for a couple of years at least. Your current energy footprint for the 10 buildings we analyzed is right at $2 a square foot. Typically through our experience and systems in counties like yours, the size of yours, with the number of buildings you have, if what we see, we believe we can take that down to under a dollar and a half. And it is that delta between $2 and, and the dollar forty-eight, I believe it is, that creates the funding to pay for the improvements. And it's a slide that I always like to show because the graph on the left clearly illustrates what we're talking about. You currently spend money in two, two areas, maintenance and operations and utility. That's a, that's the money you spend is in your budget now. By reducing those two, those two stacks of charge, by reducing your revenue costs, reducing your utilities, you create savings as green part of the second bar. It is a, a capital funding opportunity to, to keep your, it's a budget neutral approach to, to improve in your energy consumption. Based on the data from, I apologize, it's 10 buildings, not 16, over $89,000 in energy savings annually. When you combine that with typical operational savings, like no life wells, no balance, those kinds of things, but it's all new and under warranty. Combined energy savings of $1.84 billion opportunity to improve your buildings today. It increases your cash flow flexibility, increases your capital outlay with planned improvement. It's a proactive instead of a reactive approach. It addresses your immediate and some future needs with a self-funded, a budget neutral approach. It is, it is truly a guaranteed energy savings opportunity. Again, our key points is we understand county governments, we do have done, it was beginning to do some, we hope, we provide a unique improvement solution and it's a guaranteed solution, financial solutions to your technical needs as well as a hundred percent responsibility. We'd invite you to contact any of our customers. We've done a timeline based on the issuance of a new RFQ. I would tell you that, that I don't know what Mr. Bond has recommended, not being in that loop, but you did a procurement process through a Middle Georgia Clean Air. They had two response. Purpose of procurement is to let people know you're interested in doing something like this and that's been done. But there are some advantages, I think, of redoing it. So to me, to us it doesn't matter, we're certainly not afraid of a procurement process. But based on your, your local paper distribution and we, and advertising could be published, we would, would recommend if you move forward with a new procurement, that, that you issue that RFQ in your local paper and your website. I believe to publish on the 28th of May is the next publication date. That would give you a month, 28 days to just be on the safe side, to get those advertisements and those responses in. You could take action to select, officially select an energy services partner at your July meeting. That would, that would spark the end-up study of your building. And here are, to me, here are the advantages of redoing the procurement. I don't know whether that procurement was advertised locally or not, but this one would be. You would advertise this in your local paper, hand on the procurement website. That would give local contractors an opportunity to express interest and participate. If you don't have a license, an energy services company in, in Monroe County, it would certainly give your leadership opportunity to hook them. Find out who's interested and hook them up with whoever you select to do the project. So that to me is, is a, is a good political, a positive reason to do a retrofit procurement. Once, once we begin the final study, we would present back to you and just like Ben had to do that in October, and then you would be able to approve your program, be ready to start construction in November. I think it's important to, to notice that, that you get project completion in November of 2020, a year later, and, and you make a, just an interest only payment out of, out of the lease, and it's December of 2021. Everything is in place. You have collected a full years of savings plus the year of construction savings before you ever make a out-of-bout principal payment. So given, given the results and post the results of the ability to, to do 1.84 million quickly improvements in your buildings out of current budget, it would certainly be our request today that you consider authorizing the county manager to release the RFQ to, to let the world know you are in fact interested.
Okay. Quick question to go back, you talked about $89,000 in energy savings and then the rest, but 100, 1.84 million over 15 years, if you just split it up evenly, there's about 121, I mean 1 point, I'm sorry, $121,000. So there's another 30, something like thousand, you're saying, maintenance, lower maintenance costs and things like that?
Right.
Okay. And is that the right way to look at it?
It is.
1.84 million, do you just divide it up evenly or do you make, are you saving more on the front end or the back end of any?
It's pretty even. I, I mean, and actually you're saving increase because remember what you're doing is avoiding expenditures. Sure. When you save electricity, we're guaranteeing reduction in kilowatt hours, reduction in gallons, reduction in cubic feet of gas. So as those costs increase, your savings actually increase.
Well, that's, that's a good point. Real quickly, but to get back to the, whether it's 89,000, which is just the energy cost or the, or the 121,000 a year, now have you, have you got any estimate on what, because there's a cost to do all the replacement of the even air and lighting and all of that? Have you factored, because the 100, that's not a net savings, that's a gross savings, correct?
That's a, that's a gross savings. We have not, we have not looked at that balance. Most people, I'll tell you, most people aren't really interested in, in pumping it into their general fund. They want to maintain their general fund costs and improve their buildings with money they got to spend anyway. A lot of, a lot of districts in, in county as well will decide annually whether to pay that payment out of slots. And if their slot is open ended enough, they can pay that payment out of slots so that all of those savings go directly into your general fund. So at, at this point, it's too early for that. Remember that, and I may have told you this and I may not have, but at the end of, of our study, we will come back with a menu of savings opportunities by building. And each opportunity has an associated cause, right? But it also has associated savings. And so your leadership would determine what they would, would want you to consider.
Right now, you're just asking us to approve, putting out an RFQ?
Yes.
Or release RFQ, which is what you're asking us to do today.
Okay. Ray, you have a question for Ray. On that, in that menu that you talk about for an individual building, you will have it lined out about like HDX blocks?
Yes, yes. We'll have, we'll have a recommendation of everything by build and by energy conservation measure.
And then we put, and then we put across those original things and we could cherry pick inside a building.
Just keep in mind, what you want to do is, is because it's a bundled process, you want to do all of the items that have a quick turnaround to generate funds, a lot of items that don't. And you know HVAC doesn't have a quick payment, but to me just a, but if you can take lights and water and other things to help pay for, for HVAC, that's what you want to do.
Let's play to the board as to the RFQ. I don't see why not put it out.
Why don't I motion?
What? Was that? That's probably a, a little bit of a motion. Yeah, I'll, I'll motion, you know, get into discussion.
Got a motion to have a second, a six, a seven, now we're in discussion, I go ahead.
So I just, this is, this is my first time dealing with something like this. And I'm a little slower in the morning until the coffee's fully kicked in, but what, so let me ask a couple of basic questions. Are we, are we getting a, a bond? Are we getting a loan to, to cover upfront?
Well, what, how?
How is that getting financed now?
Well typically, you actually probably have a couple of reasons. Since you have public facilities authority, you could, could finance it, I think probably that way. Most people do a capital lease. And so we're, we're not in the finance business. We don't lease money, we don't market up, we don't make anything on it. But we know a lot of people that do those, those leases. So we'll hook you up.
On the equipment?
On the equipment.
Right.
And the installation. But you do a capital lease that is, is just paid out through savings. You know, you, you pay, we're the general contractor on the job, we install the job, you pay us out of escrow loan and then you pay the lease payment and then you do the lease again. That's essentially typically the way most people do it.
Okay. How, how do you, help, help me with the, without going through extreme detail, but how do you back into the 1.84? Is that a function of this sort of, the, the savings plus the time value of money essentially? Or is there?
It, it is, we, we looked at, we looked at my building, about for those 10 buildings, what's your current cost per square foot? And we compared what we found here with what we've been able to achieve in other counties like yours. So that gives us that delta. Once we have that delta between current cost and anticipated cost, it is simply a matter of that times the number of square feet as a, and plus a, a sample operational savings from a county like yours that we've achieved before, put that into a formula, they did the, the computer do calculations to, to determine how much, how much that in general. Okay. You have a question for Ray?
Any, any sub-front commitments as far as designs towards your company?
Not sure, at, at the next stage, at the letter of intent stage, there, there is a, a clause in there that says that if we return to you with a project and meets all of the requirements of the letter of intent, self-funds itself makes some improvement. And you don't move forward with that self-funded program, that you pay us a portion of the cost of that study. And Jim, I don't remember, it's, it's less than $10,000.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two forty, I believe. Which, that, that is a commit now at the next stage. If you move forward, you don't pay that. I mean, the only way you pay that is we come back with a self-funded program that improves your facilities and you just say thanks for that.
So we still have the benefit of the report for that, right? And we have a full report and?
Right. You still have the audit. And that's good information either way.
That's if we approve today, total lease RFQ.
You have no commitment?
Not until June, July 2nd, and that's only a max, a maximum of under 10, under 10,000. So the final like, no, no, no turn, no turning around point is what? I mean? Well, but let me, let me be clear on this. If we today, if we didn't do anything else today, we decided that we were not going to release RFQ, we don't want to be that. But if we do release the RFQ, we, a motion to put that through, we come back at the, and at that point in time, then we have to select an energy services partner, because we've gone through that process. And if we don't select ABM, then we owe you 9240 dollars.
No.
Oh, okay, so.
If you do, if you do select us?
Okay.
And we do the four-month study? And at that point, you decide, hey, y'all done a great job, quit something, do anything. You owe me an attitude for that.
I got you.
You don't know what's a thing until the end of the energy audit.
I got to clear that.
What day is that?
October verification of funds study?
October.
And we would come in and put, we do data loggers, we, we catalog every piece of equipment. We, we even have a device we can put on your HVAC to determine what is real series. So that, I mean, it, it's a very scientific process.
And they, you got an HVAC man down there, civil of your language.
And I've been through this study and manufacturing and we had parts in plants, roads, and we did this, we had engineers and thousands of people. It's, it's, it's certainly, and we don't even have it in Austin.
We got, we got, unless y'all have any real, other, any other questions, I think we got a motion in a second and I'd be, I feel like calling the question, all in favor. Any opposed? That passes to Ray. We'll look forward to seeing you again after the, after the RFQ.
Thank you. Our, our pleasure.
All right. Next item on the agenda is going to be Laurie Robinson. She's our highest record and she's going to come and give us the financial report. You going to stay over there? Do you want to come up?
I'm going to stay here so I can see the screen because it's kind of hard to look up.
I understand. Do you, do you want to get her microphone and grab you? That's good enough. Chief, thank you.
I'll see if I can talk loud enough without the mic. If not, I'll go get it. The first presentation for today is just an overview of our current 2019 budget to actual, which is January 1st through April the 30th. I'm just going to give you a high-level summary because we've got a long day ahead of us. And I'm just going to do the general fund and then our enterprise funds. In the general fund, we have budgeted $30,256,000 year-to-date for the four months. We have collected in revenues $12,960,000, which equates to 43% of our budget that we've collected to date. The expenditures, we have collected year-to-date, eight, or not collected, we have spent year-to-date $8,053, which equates to about 27% of our budget. Just got a little chart down here just to show you what it looks like on the revenue side and then on the expenditure side. Of course, we're only in our fourth, you know, this is four months.
Is it? Right, it's through April.
Yes, through April, this is four months.
So it's 33% of the year?
Yes.
As opposed to 27? That's good. Okay, go ahead.
Keep in mind though, that if you do it by 12, so it would be 33% where you should be at year-to-date. However, on the revenue side, we've collected some of our revenues upfront. Majority of the revenues collected there is our property taxes. On the expenditure side, we have probably not paid, oh, well not probably, we prob, I know we haven't. At April the 30th, we've not paid April's invoices all off. Just because you have some invoices that don't come until after the fact that's really for April.
Okay.
Okay, so you just got to keep those kinds of things in mind. Some of our revenues we're not even collecting yet because they're not due yet. And a big example of that one, which is a major collection for us, is the insurance premium tax. We don't collect that until October.
Right.
So, you know, that's not even accounted in there at all until October.
Have all the utilities come in?
I'm sorry?
All the utilities.
All the utilities, as far as?
Southern company.
Our, our financial franchise?
Our utilities, Georgia Power.
And all of those, some of those have come in, all of them has not come in yet.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Some of those have it, all of them have it. Also our bank institution taxes, some of those, those are all due in March, in March 31st. Some of them come in, some of them haven't. I got to follow up on all those. The water fund, our revenues year-to-date is $491,566 that we've collected to our 1.88 million budget. That equates to about 26% of revenue collections. On the other hand, our expenditures, we've spent year-to-date $559,866 to the annual budget, which equates to about 30%. So their expenditures is right on line of what they should have spent if you take it divided by 12, is at 33%. A little under on the revenue side of collection. And a utility fund, we should be at 33% because there's, it's not like governmental, you're collecting user fees that are consistent throughout the whole year. There's not any extra, you're not waiting on taxes. You know, all of this should be on a monthly basis. Fees should be on a monthly basis.
Real quickly, is there any adjustment in that? For, for example, this is January through April, so you've got a lot of the winter months. Are we going to have higher revenues in water through the summer months?
Could possibly, yes. Depending on water and also keep in mind, once again, as I said, in the general fund, a lot of April bills, they're billed out for April, but have not collected for April. So you have some of that going on in there as well too. But yes, you could, in the summer months, you have a lot of, if people water outside, so they're utilizing more water in the summer months than they would in the winter months. Pools, you know, filling up pools, I don't know what kind of discounts we give for pools, if any, but that's some, you know, if you're filling up pools and stuff like that, then of course, yes, in the summertime, you, you should have an increase in your water sales, water revenue.
But just real quickly, Jim, where are we of collections? I mean, we're, we're, we've, we had a lot of people that were outstanding months and months and months and we have pretty much slowed that down to, we're pretty much on schedule, right? All right?
Yes, we're down to people owing $35 and below, about that, as far as already in the house, please.
All right.
Okay, our solid waste fund, the solid waste, I'm just going to give you the operational revenues. The other financial sources is the money that general fund has set up in the budget to transfer if it's needed through the year, which they will need some, of course. Other operational revenues is $431,950 that we've budgeted. We have received year-to-date $143, $143,500, which is right on 33%. And our expenditures to date, they've spent $392,448 of the, of the budget, which equates to 26%. And then our last enterprise fund is the conference center. The total annual budget is $216,710. They have collected $69,000 to date, which equates to right at 32%. And they have spent $40,000, which equates to about 18%. So she's held her costs down while still producing the revenues for the center.
Do we have any unreceived funds so far for April?
In here, this one should not be.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, now what I, what could be in this case is, um, if it's rented, it's fifty percent of it could be just paid now until closer to the rental date. So this fund should pretty much be, yeah, right on.
Well, let me, I want to make a comment for the record. On the two thousand fourteen spot, this was a designated as a civic center, not a comfort center and not an enterprise fund. And I want that corrected. All we got to do is let the county attorney, it makes a difference. It's, it will be the same thing as making the, uh, making the recreation department of enterprise fund. And staff here just named it a comfort center. It is a civic center. And that's what it was outlined for at one point two and that's what it's supposed to be. And it makes a difference.
Can you go back one? I, I just had one question. All those solid waste fund, we're going to talk in a few minutes about the fees and rates and, uh, this current situation, I know you're not looking at this, this current situation income is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and expenses of one point four million. Um, when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, man, we're about to break even, but we're not even, where is the additional money coming in to, because solid waste is not a factor for that.
No, that's correct because if you look at it, we have in other financial sources, one million is funded by general fund.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, that's why I said I've, you still have other financial sources up there, but I'm not going to discuss that. I'm just, I'm just discussing current operations.
Right.
Yeah, no, at the end of the day or the end of the year, we're, general fund's going to have to subsidize the solid waste fund. And that's what we're estimating we're going to have to subsidize them for, for this year.
Okay, that, and that's, that's kind of what I'm.
Middle part of that is right now, unless I'm mistaken and something's changed, the insurance premium tax has been allocated to solid waste.
That's the way it was, it changed it last year. Well, boy.
We did?
Like one point, one point one.
I was satisfied with it.
I think somebody else did, but, uh, that's generally how we did it, out of the insurance, out of insurance premium tax. And for some reason or other, it was suggested, I think that's before you come on there, that be changed, but, uh, that it makes it look better on the accounting ledger, uh, that way, insurance premium tax. And just for the record, the, the landfill will never break even. We specified, we built landfill, we only wanted in-county garbage, no out-county garbage. It could be profitable and the only way you can change that is by a referendum, just about.
Is that, is it, if, isn't it designated based on property that we acquire? Or it, or is it, or is it the fact that, you know, are we forever prohibited from? Let's say, let's say we found another site somewhere.
No, it's not for them. Uh, we just specified in order to, I can go, in order for it to, to change, the citizens of Monroe County must go in a referendum.